Let's see. Okay, yeah, first item of business is called the order. And that would be starting the meeting and next item is Pledge of Allegiance led by me. And if you'd stand and put your hand over your heart and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. To the flag. United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Liberty and justice for all. I think most of you are muted. Which didn't interfere with my saying the pledge. Mike, Mike, President Vice President Schaefer, would you do the invocation, please?
Yeah, I'd be glad to President Ooten. You know, as we deliberate and consider our actions this evening. Ensure that we are mindful of our goals and objectives. Let us consider our actions in the best interest of all involved. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
President Robert Ooten.
Here.
Thank you.
Um, do we have any late communications?
No, Mr. President.
No, Mr. President, but we did receive one email from Sue Lester requesting to make public comments.
Yeah, so okay, I saw that. Would you scroll down? So, okay, stack of public comments. Sue, do you want to speak now? I think you wanted to speak now and and on item number four under the General Manager's report.
Baby.
Correct.
So listen to the fireworks. Sue's gonna rip them right now. About term limits. So if they don't appoint her.
I'm sorry.
Somebody else is talking.
What? I didn't hear that. Was someone talking to me?
Sue, would you, were in the public comment, did you want to speak under public comments and then later under?
Oh. Yes, yes.
Okay.
Um, I just a general public comment that doesn't have anything to do with anything on the agenda. And then I did want to address item number four under General Manager's comments.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, hello, President Board Members, Sue Lester here. Um, I am or will be a member of the Citizen Advisory Committee until the end of this month. But I want you to know that the comments I'm going to make right now, um, I'm making as an individual resident of the city. And in no way do my comments reflect the views of any of the members of the Citizen Advisory Committee, and I'm not speaking on their behalf. So I want to make sure that you know that. Um, I wanted to circle back around with something that we have, that I have brought up before in the past as it relates to term limits. And term limits for board members, I know that there aren't any right now. And I would like to ask that you guys revisit the conversation of potentially having those going forward. Um, if the federal government has taught us anything, it's that term limits can be a good thing. Um, the second thing I wanted you to take a look at is the Citizen Advisory Committee, they actually have term limits. It says in the handbook that they're able, that members of the Citizens Advisory Committee are able to serve three consecutive two-year lim, uh, two-year terms, which would term out a volunteer that is just giving their time and not being compensated. It would only allow them six years to participate. So in in kind of looking at that, it's a little bit backward where people who that are volunteering and aren't being compensated have a limit to the amount of time that they can participate, where elected officials have no limit. Um, I looked at the City of Costa Mesa and the City of Costa Mesa also has committees and a multitude of them. But even on their Planning Commission and their Park Commission where there is a little bit of money where the the people are paid on the commissions, they don't have any term limits for those people either. So if you look at our historical society, we have people that have literally been on the Historical Society for the City of Costa Mesa since it started. And, um, I'm hoping that you will take a look at this and see that not having limits for some of these committees where people just volunteer their time, it could be extremely beneficial to the district. If 10 years from now, you have somebody that was able to and still wanted to volunteer their time for for 10 years, and then there would be some kind of um, institutional knowledge as far as the committee goes from a committee perspective. So if you guys could, you know, think about that and take a look at that, you know, look at not only maybe term limits for the board, but also getting rid of the term limits for your volunteer positions. That'd be great. And that's all I had to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Sue. The next item is the Consent Calendar. Uh, does anyone want to pull any items or do I have a motion for the whole thing?
Mr. President?
Yes, Brett.
I have a a question on consent item 12, so I guess I'd want to pull it. I just wanted to maybe a clarification from Scott on it.
Okay, let's, uh, do I have a motion for the balance?
Move for approval of the Consent Calendar eliminating 12. And as presented.
I'll say.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Mike, Mike, do you raise your hand? You're muted. Okay, let's go to Director Echols, Director Echols, I'm sorry, Brett.
I respond pretty much to anything these days. Thank you, Mr. President.
Let's go to item number 12 and you and I both, I also have a question on item 12, so.
Okay, well, good, maybe it's the same one, I don't know, but, um, I Scott, a question on the first contract with the Occupational Safety Training Systems for 3,870 for safety and tailgate meetings. Um, I'm pretty familiar with those sorts of meetings. Can you just maybe elaborate? What that contract is and the duration of it and kind of just the summary of what they're doing for us?
Sure, actually, if you if you don't mind, Director, I'm gonna punt this ball and give it to Diana. Uh, but she has that contract. Diana, if you can, I think she's more familiar with this contract than I am.
Great.
Yes, so this is our safety training contracts for the year. It's actually for training from February to February. And it's for the field staff. Then some of the trainings they do, we can do through Target Solutions, which is through SDRMA, and so there's no additional cost to that. But then there's some other trainings that they need to do, they need to do with an in-person trainer like Hazwhopper, Refresher. Some some different ones. And then also, uh, we do quarterly safety committee meetings. And so OSTS comes on site. And at both facilities, they'll do a walkthrough. And then they will just call out anything that may be a safety hazard. And then we meet, we have a safety committee with the district. And so the committee meets and then we go over any concerns and as well as any, if there had been any injuries within that quarter, then we discuss that also.
And are the tailgate meetings a daily, a daily, weekly? Uh, what's the duration on those?
So the the meetings are monthly and then Steve does separate tailgate meetings with the with the field staff.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for that clarification.
You are welcome.
Um, my my question was on on item number two in contracts. We discussed, we had a lengthy discussion last month about the potential need for new hires. And I think there were two or three times when Scott had needed to ask for money, you know, for to hire a sewer, a sewer pipe cleaning contractor. And his his authority, I think, is $125,000 a year. So my my question, my question is, is if Scott does this five times and it comes up to 175,000, has that exceeded his authority? It it's, this is a different deal than, um, well, than than normal General Manager's authorizations because it's, it can reoccur many times in in one fiscal year, but.
If I could respond, Mr. President?
Yes, yes, Alan.
The contract limit is per contract, so if he's doing another contract, he could do another one for that amount.
Okay, okay, well, then then it's a different deal. It goes back to our our need to get the sewer cleaning crews available. And that would be how we could save money.
Okay, yes, if I could, if I could elaborate, Mr. President, so like, like, uh, District Council Allen Burns has mentioned, if I if I have one contract with Harris, Houston Harris, and I made several amendments that increased their cost. And let's say I'm on my amendment number two or number three, and it goes over that $125,000 from that one contract. Then I have to go to the board and ask for appropriations because that does exceed my my authority. Now, you you were seeing a couple of Houston Harris contracts in previous reports. That's we, on all those contracts, we went out to did an RFP on all those contracts and they were the low bid. So there were separate contracts based after a a bid procedure. So that's why it doesn't apply for what you're saying that, yes, there are several contracts, but like District Council Allen Burns said, they're separate.
Okay.
What Scott said, if it's a, you know, the same contract and you continually increase it, then you'd have a limit. But if you're talking about new contracts, the limit applies.
But but it turns out it's the same contractor time after time. Anyway, okay, I I give up. I move, I move approval of item number 12.
All second.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, let's go on to General Manager Reports. Uh, Scott, are you going to introduce Tri, Tri Peppy, uh, potential contract extension? Scott, you're muted.
I always forget that. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I am going to turn this over to Gina Toriano to do this report.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Um, I'd like to start by reintroducing to you our Communications Consultant Tri Peppy Smith, whom the district has been working with for the past 12 months to implement a communication strategic plan to optimize our public communications platforms to increase awareness of our programs and to better engage district customers. So tonight we have Tri Peppy Smith Director Jennifer Netwig here with us. Um, and she's here to share an overview of our engagement and the resulting metrics and impacts. As you may recall, Jennifer has been our project manager and she's done a fantastic job of keeping her team and our CMS team, CMSD team on track with this project. So with that, I will hand it over to Jen for the presentation.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you very much. And Gina, would you like to share slides or would you like me to go ahead and share slides?
Um, Nolani, if you could pull up the presentation, I think we can share the slides for you.
And while those are coming up, I can go ahead and get started. So, um, good afternoon, President Ooten and members of the board. As Gina mentioned, my name is Jen Menkweig, a Tri Peppy Smith Director with the privilege of leading our support to the district over the past year or so. So tonight, I'm really excited to be sharing with you a high-level overview. Um, a year in review of our communication efforts and successes. So next slide, please. And this agenda slide shows you what we'll be digging into today, so I'll elaborate on each of these items as we move forward. Next slide, please. On this side, you'll see your Tri Peppy Smith team. So the entire Tri Peppy Smith team is a robust group of 25 communications experts specializing in everything from communication strategy to social media, graphic design, photography, videography, and more. But the individuals that you see here are the ones who have been most closely linked up with your staff, working hand in hand together over the past year or so. Next slide, please. So next, I want to review an overall goal that we had for our communication efforts with the district over the past year, which was to transform the district's messaging into compelling communications that reach intended stakeholders while building up the district's internal communication policies and practices. Next slide, please. So how do we evaluate efforts towards that goal? For our discussion today, I want to base it around a core axiom of Tri Peppy Smith, which you can see here on the slide. Content times distribution equals impact. And you can see the meaning of that axiom on the chart on the slide. And today I'll highlight how Tri Peppy Smith has elevated the district's communications to the upper right box by helping the district develop strong content, distributing it widely, and helping the district to see impacts that support your overall strategic goals. Next slide, please. So for the content piece, I will highlight just a few of the most significant communication campaigns and products implemented from July 2020 through March of 2021. And as a reminder, our team came on board in around April. And for the first three months of our engagement, we conducted a communication assessment. And then, um, in July of 2020, really started implementing and supporting the district's communication activities. So next slide. On this slide, you can see snapshots representing the four awareness campaigns that Tri Peppy Smith planned and implemented on top priority issues and programs for the district. Only fleshing the three Ps, how to properly dispose of fats, oils, and grease. The availability of free kitchen pails to support organic recycling, and how to properly recycle using your mixed waste, mixed waste carts. For each campaign, we developed a live action video, a press release, an email distributed to customers and other government agencies and social media content, including ads. And we're proud to have seen significant reach and impact for each of these campaigns, which I'll cover in the following slides. Next slide, please. Here you can see examples of MailChimp email templates that we created for the district to use for various email updates throughout the year, ranging, as you can see, from holiday collection schedule updates to meetings and to general program updates. Next slide, please. Our team is also proud to support the district's social media strategy throughout the year by developing at least four social media posts each month to publicize information and programs as well as promote sustainability best practices. And you can see just a few examples of those here on the screen as well. Next slide, please. We also developed a Costa Mesa sanitary district style guide, which is a tool that will continue to standardize and elevate the district's communications by ensuring a consistently professional look and feel across your products and channels. Along with the guide itself, we provided templates and Word PDFs and print-ready design files. Next slide, please. And the last example of content I want to highlight is the stock photography captured by Tri Peppy Smith's photographer, including new portraits of the board and staff, which the district can also continue to use over time to ensure a professional and consistent look and feel of your communications moving forward. And these are just a few of some of the communication activities that I wanted to highlight over the past year. And with that, we'll move into describing the distribution piece of the formula. Next slide, please. So distribution, again, go back to the core axiom, we're covering distribution metrics from July and through March, as close as we can get for the metrics through March, to show how widely distributing high-quality content can result in high-impact communications. Next slide, please. The first distribution metric you see here is your followers and subscribers on social media. And overall, you can see that the numbers increased across the board. Most dramatically on Instagram, where your followers went up by 241. And Facebook, where your followers went up by 175. These numbers show that there are more people who are interested in and more likely to see your content, which is demonstrated in later slides that we'll also get to on reach and engagement. Next slide, please. So here, with the number of social media posts, you can see that the total number of social media posts each month increased significantly from June of 2020 through February of 2021, from a low of around 20 total posts to a high of nearly 120 posts per month. And you'll see a similar variation in some of our volume metrics as well. And some of the spikes that you'll see correspond to the awareness campaigns that were conducted throughout the year as well. So where you see a jump and then a little bit going back and forth and is correlated to those awareness campaigns we covered earlier. So next slide, please. And we should be on the slide for reach. Yep. So this slide tells you the reach of your posts, which also increased significantly over time. Initially, your social media content was reaching less than 20,000 stakeholders in the given month. And you can see that it has now reached as high as around 150,000 stakeholders. The variation in reach from month to month that you see here, as I mentioned in the previous slide, is related to those awareness campaigns that were running during any given month in the social media advertising that may have been involved. So for December, for example, that was the Kitchen Pale campaign, which was tremendously engaging on social media. Um, but as you can see, the reach is now consistently around 100,000. Next slide, please. And we're focused on distribution metrics outside of just social media, since we realize not all your stakeholders may be active there. So on the website side too, you have seen your website visits go up from less than 100 visits a month to now around 500 visits in recent months. Next slide, please. And lastly, we'll take a look at distribution metrics for emails. So on this slide, you can see the number of MailChimp emails distributed by the district each month, which were around two in the summer of 2020 and have been right around 10 emails per month in recent months. Next slide, please. And the number of email recipients has also increased, so this shows your subscription distribution list of people who receive those automatically. And that has increased from 1,063 in June of 2020 to 2,220 in February of 2021. Next slide, please. So what do all these numbers mean for the Costa Mesa Sanitary District? Because Tri Peppy Smith has been assisting your team develop high-quality content and distribute it widely, you are seeing strategic impacts, which we'll cover in the following few slides. Next slide, please. Here you can see a summary of your social media engagement and tone. Your engagement metrics have skyrocketed, meaning that people are actually interacting with your content in meaningful ways. And on the side, you can see just a few examples of the tone of that content as well, which is generally appreciative of the district and the information being shared. Next slide, please. And perhaps most importantly, on this slide, you can see just a few examples of notable results in terms of participation in district programs. So during and shortly after the awareness campaign about the Kitchen Pale Program, there are around 60 pails distributed, which I understand is a large jump in the program from what you typically see. For the Sewer Inspection Reboot Program, the district received 49 applications from June of 2020 through February 2021, keeping that program on track for this year. The Household Hazardous Waste Collection Program received 71 requests from July of 2020 through February 2021, which is a significant increase compared to 49 in the same period last year. And similarly, the Large Item Collection Program received 324 requests from July of 2020 through February of 2021, compared to just 125 in the same period last year. I'll also note that staff has seen an overall increase in tonnage for solid waste programs over the course of the engagement. But we believe that that's also attributed attributable to COVID-19 and stay-at-home orders. So hard to draw that direct correlation there. Next slide, please. And next slide. So in conclusion, I'd like to thank you so much for the opportunity to support the Costa Mesa Sanitary District's communications over the past year or so. In terms of next steps, as Gina mentioned and in the staff report as well, your staff is prepared to move forward with specific communications focus areas such as social media, based upon the training that our team has provided. And we're also prepared to work together with staff to provide continued extended support with a more limited scope in particular areas, which includes program campaigns and continued graphic design support moving forward. And that concludes my presentation this afternoon. I'm ready for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Uh, any questions?
Bob, this Mike, I have one quick question for Jennifer, if it's okay?
Yeah, sure, Mike.
Jennifer, um, thank you. Good presentation, very, very informative. Is there any way of knowing? Those were some significant increases in the social media platforms, which is very encouraging, obviously. Is there any way of gauging or guessing probably what impact the pandemic has had on that? You know, with people probably more involved in social media than they might be without a pandemic. Is there any way of gauging how that affected us and what the effect might be going post-pandemic, should that occur?
Certainly. So I think in terms of, um, doing a baseline, as you mentioned, we could look across other agencies that we support. I will say that it hasn't been something that we've noticed, that there have been spikes like the district has seen. So we can certainly take a look at that, but I do think that it's notable, your increases regardless of the pandemic. And I can follow up with that and let staff know what we might find looking across the other organizations we support. And then in terms of moving forward, definitely the increases that you've seen for your followers and subscribers and people who are already engaged, I would expect them to continue to stay engaged. I don't believe after the pandemic, people are going to go and unfollow you, for example. So that will be a positive trend. And as long as we continue the momentum and the types of communications that the district has been doing, I would expect to, I would honestly expect it to continue to increase for your management.
That would be the the most positive outcome, obviously, is that it continues. And I want to attribute more the increase in the the participation with the fact that more people now are seeing what we have to offer, and they may be spreading it to other people, which we all tend to do on social media anyway. So I I see that as a extremely positive impact that that us increasing our visibility has led to people tagging on. Just a thought.
Yes, I agree.
Any other directors?
Mr. President, you have a hand up from Elodie Katz.
Elodie, all right, Elodie.
Hi, yes, good evening. Uh, Jennifer, thank you so much for that presentation. I just, could you please clarify for the reach regarding the 100,000 people on average per month? It's just such a higher number than the other slides. Is that essentially the followers of the district on Facebook? And then if they like one of the posts, everyone that they're friends with, if you could just clarify how how you come up with those numbers?
Exactly. So Facebook reach is the number of unique people who saw your content. So it can be people who follow you and you see your content pop up in their newsfeed. And then, as we mentioned too, if people are tagging others and then those others see the content, then that's another way that it can spread. But to your point, yeah, it's the the definition is the number of unique people who see the content.
Okay, thank you. That's that's very encouraging.
Uh, any other directors have questions?
Mr. President, I do.
Director Echols?
Yeah, hi, Jennifer, um, just, and you might cover this in the next part, I'm not sure. So if you are, I'll be quiet, but, um, going forward, if if the board elects to continue this, this, um, what what sorts of things would be in the works to increase, uh, not only reach but touches and all that through the various platforms going forward? What 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 can be done differently or new or improved? Anything like that?
Sure. So I can briefly describe the scope that we're thinking of for the extended support and what staff has asked for specifically. So moving forward, and we would continue to work with the district on continued strategic planning. So every quarter, getting together and thinking through what your goals are and activities and how communications can best support those efforts. Um, we would also support specific programs and service campaigns. So similar to the four campaigns we did last year, we would focus on whatever your priorities are for the upcoming year and support the campaigns as we did with the previous four. We provide the continued graphic design and general communication support and ongoing project management. So we currently conduct bi-weekly calls with your staff to make sure that we're providing all the support that you might need on a week-to-week basis. Um, so that is specifically what's included in the scope for Tri Peppy Smith. But I think to more specifically answer your question about social media, that is something that we've provided tailored training on to the district staff. So, um, at this point, I believe Nolani and the district team feel comfortable to continue running social media with our ability to support as needed in strategy, any questions that may come up, graphic design that we can deliver to further boost that effort and make sure that it continues to be on track and support your strategic goals.
And just a follow-up question on that. Or have you laid out with our staff, uh, say, metric goals, attainable goals over the this past year and then going forward and um, how that looks? This past year and then going forward and um how that looks?
Yeah, I think that's part of our quarterly strategy sessions, actually, and so moving forward, what we would look to do is continue to have. Our regular sessions with staff and then get that next quarterly strategy session on the books, so we can certainly plan on doing that with your staff.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Uh, any any other questions from the directors? Or Judith, you have your hand up? No, you're muted, Judith.
Yes, but I'm not a director, and so I put my hand down again, but if you if you'll take the question, uh, does uh. Does the district uh, do the workers, uh Gina and Noel and, you know, all those great people. Uh, do they Scots people, uh, do they have any say on what is being shown? Um, uh, as far as um, maybe making corrections on. Oh, uh, some of the uh, the people who are doing the. The the artwork do, um, or or. I'm I'm trying to not say something, but uh, I I just will. Um, one of them uh, that I saw a film uh, on on television as a commercial kind of thing. Um, had had someone being very careful about what they were doing with their trash. However, um, they weren't. Uh, it didn't look to me like they were really uh finishing up correctly. Uh, to say, oh, and here's here's the the bag and I'm gonna put it in the the this trash can. It was the wrong kind of bag. And the trash can, and the 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 pictures didn't really go with the message.
Uh, Judith, are you talking about one of the one of the programs that that uh TriPepe developed for us?
Yes. And um, uh, I I guess it's a commercial that costs a lot of money and it uh for us to pay for it to be shown. And I was wondering if our people. Uh, in our employees could have some um overview to kind of. Say, yes, this is a good way to show it and or can you do something about?
Okay, yeah, I I think I think we understand the question. Jenna Jennifer, uh, would you like to respond, please?
Yes, absolutely, and thank you for the feedback. Our team does currently conduct calls with the district staff every other week. And we have a plan going into the development of any product, and then we also present drafts and final drafts to the district staff. For review and approval before moving forward with publicizing any items. Thank you.
Uh, any any directors have any further questions? I have a have a couple, but. Um, my my question was, I I think when we started this program, um, we we talked about so um. Um, email email and email list, uh. That I, I I don't see it is, it has been uh well-developed. We we had a, we, and we also talked about after this program or after this contract was completed, that we would go out and do a. A citizen survey after a certain period of time to 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 see if it uh was was having an impact. Um, I I think I think these kinds of things need time to develop, uh, and and just to to go shooting forward. With X number of programs, I think the number was five and and I haven't heard what the five are. But it sounds to me like, you know, TriPepe and staff will get together and decide what the five are. I I I think it's just too early, uh, and and I had a very, I had that very direct question about an email list. Uh, when we did our last citizen survey, um, Adam Porpoloski said, oh, you, it's very easy to get an email list. Uh, and and um, you know, I'm confused about whether or not we've we've got that. Um, I don't know, I'm kind of rambling, but um.
Uh, President, I can, I can um take that question. As far as the email list. Um, we did start out with the intention of reaching, I think, a certain amount of uh emails. I want to say it was um. A third at least of our um.
Certain number.
Um, and I believe when we started the communications strategic plan of TriPepe Smith. Um, we found that it it wasn't actually um possible to obtain lists uh that way. Uh, in the way that Mr. Probalski had initially told us. So we have tried to develop the list through other means, uh through social media. Um, Jen, maybe you can expand on that, but I know we've done a couple of campaigns to try to gather more, and we have seen growth through that method.
So you're sure you're developing that list in another way, and and I want to address this to Scott. Scott, I think at the beginning of this program, we were going to give this, give this uh contract some time to um simmer. And then we were gonna go out and do a citizen survey. Citizen surveys are not cheap, so I'm I'm not advocating that we do that necessarily, but. Why, 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 why the need to keep going so quickly?
Well, Mr. President and Board Director, we we do plan on putting in the budget for next year, a another citizen survey. Uh, we think it's it's good to continue engaging with the residents on the level of service they're receiving and. Having another survey now in two thousand twenty-one will give us a good comparison on how far we've. We've grown in in the social media and in in community outreach, how how well uh uh our targets have been. And so I do believe it's important to continue engaging with those residents, because that's only, that's how you continually get improved, is is how 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 you know how you're doing. So it is, we we do plan to bring that back to the to the board, um, a budget for for the citizens, no, the citizen survey.
Okay. And do you think that it would be appropriate to wait to do more of the uh TriPepe work until after that?
No, I I think my my rest is that we continue, I think we continue um using TriPepe, I I I believe we have the momentum is is strong and we continue with that momentum. Uh, as you've seen in the in the presentations, with TriPepe's assistance, I think we we've we made tremendous gains. Uh, and outreach, and that was really the goal, I I believe from the board, is to reach more people, and and I believe we accomplished that. And there's still more people out there to reach, so I think we we continue with that momentum and and my recommendation, which is on your staff report, is is to. Um, you know, that that is the action item, uh, item is to to waive any bidding procedures and direct staff to budget. I think it was sixty-three thousand dollars for next fiscal year to continue the services with TriPepe Smith for another year.
When when we, when will the board know what the five programs staff intends to work with TriPepe will be?
I believe we've already done that, haven't we? Correct me if I'm wrong, Gina, we've done the five programs already?
Um, so we have some tentative plans for the the programs. We were going to uh promote the Large Item Collection Program. The Household Hazardous Waste Collection Program, uh, the Sewer Inspection Rebate Program. And I believe the Fog Program, so the idea is we're gonna split it fifty-fifty between solid waste and wastewater. Um, we did wanted to want to leave a little bit of flexibility, just in case there's anything pressing that the board would like to um feature in the campaigns. But those were our initial ideas.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have a question.
Arlene?
Okay, um, I was just one, first of all, great presentation. I really enjoyed it. Very meaningful. Um, I'm curious how, what's your input on our news article that goes out? You know, living green as far as every three months. You know, when we're sending it out to all these people, do you have some input on it, or how involved are you in that?
The news, Arlene, you mean the newsletter?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you, Secretary Schaefer, for that question. So our involvement varies from month to month in collaboration with staff, depending on what your needs might be. So in various months, we have had articles that have been developed for awareness campaigns that have been featured in the newsletter. We've also had staff come to us with requests for particular graphics, so I believe in the most recent newsletter. There are at least a handful of graphics explaining the different carts and which goes in what cart. And um, the different services that the district provides and the value that customers get for what they pay. So it does vary from month to month, but we work on content based on direction from staff that can be included to focus on your priorities.
Thank you, good.
Thank you.
And and one last question, um, the you you, this this comes out of both the solid waste and wastewater budget, and is it evenly divided, Gina? I mean.
Yes, it is evenly but divided, um, as seen in the financial review.
Okay, okay.
President.
Uh, Director Echols?
Just a question maybe for Gina, uh, going forward, we're looking at a sixty-four thousand dollar budget item to continue. What was this last contract valued at?
Um, I I'm not remembering the exact uh amount off the top of my head. I believe it was around eighty-seven.
Yeah, eighty, I remember eighty-four, eighty-five thousand. Yeah, it's in the eighty thousand dollar range. That's what I remember, yes.
And then, uh, so, say roughly twenty thousand dollar difference. Uh, what would, what would be, I mean, the those costs, maybe Jennifer, was that for initial setup? Things like that, now we're just kind of farming instead of hunting, is that the reason?
Um, Director Echols, to answer your question, a large part of the reason is that the intent with the original contract was to build up the district's capabilities. And so part of our initial engagement was to do quarterly training with district staff. And we conducted training on social media best practices, graphic design philosophies and concepts, as well as hands-on photography training. So through that training, now staff feel comfortable taking on particular communication functions, and that reduces the overall TriPepe Smith contract.
Got it. Alright, thank you.
Uh, do any other directors have any any questions or discussion, or do we have a recommendation for this item?
Mr. President? I would uh, I would move that we receive and file the presentation the year in review and then. Uh, waive the bidding requirements and and direct our staff to proceed with the scope of work as outlined. Which are Pepe Smith uh for sixty-four thousand dollars.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five 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 zero. Um, the next item is consider appointing five members to the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Hey Bob, can I make a comment?
Uh, yes, Art?
I'm I'm gonna have to leave in a minute, but I have uh my five recommendations, and I'm not sure how the vote's gonna go, but I'm gonna have to leave in a minute or two.
Uh, okay.
Can I have Nolani take this down for my votes?
Yes, go ahead.
Sure.
I had Cindy Brenneman, Sue Lester, Ellie Katz, Jeff Arbor, and Judy, Judith Gidlow. Those are my five, so I'm on for a few more minutes, but it's wrapping up and the bus is coming, so.
Okay.
And let me know later while the vote went.
Alright, okay, this, basically we're, uh, is there any discussion about uh? Uh, or any of the directors have recommendations for um how to appoint the five members to the CAC Committee?
Mr. President, uh, just. It's been discussed previously and also by, I believe, uh, one of our CAC advisor committee members is looking at the. Makeup of the division, you know, makeup of the CAC, and Noilani has sent that out for us, so. Just my suggestion is we we definitely look at the current makeup and then any future makeup as we as we go through this process. By divisions.
Yeah, I think I think what uh Nalani sent out was just for the 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 current. Um, seven, seven or eight uh applicants. And and I I think you're speaking more broadly, maybe to, you know, the entire, so I think we need to know from the entire committee. You know, where where all the CAC members reside.
So, for instance, I don't know, a month or so back, she did send that out, like Division One has. Has five uh members, Division Two has three, Division Three has one, Division Four none, and Division Five two. So as we go through this appointment process, we just want to kind of keep those numbers in mind. And Division Four, unfortunately, there wasn't an applicant, so there's not much we could do about that.
Nor Division Two.
Nor Division Two, and we're losing one, so we will have two going forward in Division Two.
Uh, do any of the directors have any other recommendations?
Yeah, Bob, um, if 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 there's no other discussion, um, I would like to go ahead and propose. Uh, five candidates to appoint to the CAC. And I believe those five candidates that I would support are the ones that Director Perry mentioned. Ellie Katz, Sue Lester, Jeff Arbor, Cindy Brenneman, and Judy Gilo. So that would be my motion is to appoint those five. Um, I just want to add that I wholeheartedly agree with Director Echols that uh we need. We need these other districts, but based on who submitted, um, and based on the resumes and things that I looked at. Those are the five that that would would be my five choices.
So is that a second to nominate?
Did Director Perry make a motion to nominate those five?
We we need a second, Art, Art, Nolani?
I'll second.
Mr. President?
Yes, Alan.
Thanks, and Nolani, uh, if if that works, fine, otherwise, I would say each director should probably nominate. Five people they would like to see uh on the board, and then we'll count and see who wins. If this, if your motion is in the form of a motion and a second, and that passes, then fine, that that ends it. But if it does not, then I think we should proceed along those lines, and I want Director Perry's vote to count, so uh. We would get to that before he leaves, unless he left already.
Mr. President?
I did make a motion, by the way.
Alright, dude.
I I know, but if it doesn't work.
Right, right.
Yeah, it it can be a mess.
But I second your motion, Mike.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other board member discussion?
I, Mr. President?
Okay.
Uh, I would throw a substitute motion or really throw things off kilter here, but uh pretty much the same as the original motion. Uh, but to balance out the divisions, a little bit less from Division One, I would go with uh. Adding uh Hangame Abraham in lieu of uh Arbor, but and then the other four. Uh, would be fine.
Alright, do we have a second to the substitute motion? Uh, seeing none, then I I guess we'll go back to voting on the um.
Mr. President?
Yes. Director Schaefer, yes.
I just wanted to say that I really like the idea of what um. Actually, Sue said about looking at this. I I just feel that people with experience, when they sit on the chair or when they sit on some uh. Um, committee, it gives them experience and it gives them a chance to really understand and know. The city and know um us as people. And so I think we should really look at this as if we need to really put terms on this, because I like the idea that, you know. If somebody is willing to serve, more power to them than to have to go through all this that we're going through now. But, and I just wanted to add too that I do go along with Perry. Uh, Director Perry on what he said, I think it's perfect what he said, but at the same time, I think we should really. Study this or look at it and see if anyone else feels like I do, okay?
Well, I think I think that I think that should be something for the director's comments at the end of the end of this session. Um, but for now, uh, we have a motion on the floor, um, for five candidates, and we have a second. Um, Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call on that, please?
Sure. Uh, all in favor for Cindy Brenneman, Sue Lester, Ellie Katz, Jeff Arbor, and Judy Gilo? Director Michael Schaefer, how do you vote?
I I I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. I, I, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, could you read those names one more time for me?
Yes, I have Cindy Brenneman, Sue Lester, L L E Katz, Jeff Arbor and Judith Gilo.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Secretary Schaefer?
Yes, I, I vote aye on that.
Director Perry? I believe him, he has stepped off already, but those were his votes, so I'm gonna count him as an aye. Director Eccles?
Aye.
And President Newton?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Yeah, I think there was good discussion. I think Scott, have you, have you heard the discussion and figured out, figure out how to proceed with answering those questions in the near future?
Yes, I did, I did, Mister President.
Okay, let's go on to item number three. No, you're okay. I was looking, I was looking at number four. Receive and file the implementation plan for the corrective action and recommended enhancements in the 2020 S S M P Sewer System Management Plan Audit Results. Do any of the directors have any discussion on this item?
I move for approval.
Just a receive and file?
Yes.
If, if there's no other discussion, then, then I, I would recommend that we receive and file the plan. I think it was a good one. I appreciate, appreciate the effort. Go on to item number four. Considerate, and, and I think Sue Lester would, would like to make public comment on this item, so I, I think it's appropriate now to do that. Sue, are you there?
Maybe she's muted.
Yeah, Sue, you're muted.
I think she was just practicing what she was going to say, but. Sue, Sue, are you, are you, can, Noilani, can you see her and unmute her?
I requested to unmute, but I'm not gonna. There she is.
Hear me now?
Yes.
I wasn't sure if it was appropriate for me to comment ahead of the presentation of the item or if, if it is, I'll go ahead and go.
Go.
Okay, so. I can't say enough good things about Jim Ferryman and not only has he contributed just an, an immeasurable amount to the community as a whole. His contributions to the sanitary district over the years are immense. And I fully support naming the pump station after him. And I, I had mentioned this before in the CAC meeting and I think it, it bears being mentioned, warrants being mentioned again, that recently we just renamed the the Wilson Yard after Rob Hamers, who was extremely deserving and sadly he passed away and that yard was not named after him until he had passed. And I think it's important as we move forward, when, when you find people that are worthy of having something named after them, that we name it after them while they are still here and they can feel the appreciation for the decades of contributions that they've given as opposed to just memorializing them in death once they, they've passed. So I hope that you will all vote to do this because there really isn't anybody more deserving than Jim Ferryman. And that's all I have, so thank you.
Thank you, Sue. You know, you know, I fully support this motion. I would, I, I, I would, I was wondering if there's some additional way and, and Jim is still living. I saw him at the golf, a recent outing and he's very appreciative of this. I, I wish we had a sewer lift station. There, there are pumps, there are pump stations in Orange County Sand District with people's names on it, so I guess it's, it is appropriate. Do, do any of the other board members have what I was thinking is, is there some award or something that we might think of in the future, you know, to, to fit in with huh, with, with, with this kind of naming process? Rather than just a facility, but what do the other directors think?
I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure if, if, like, we don't have a Jackie Robinson Most Valuable Player or something like that, unfortunately. I, I, I just want to bring up something and, and this is probably backtracking on my, my part and I apologize for that. But at the last meeting when we were talking about this, I had made comment that it'd be, it'd be great if we put something out in the public that people drive by and they could see Jim's name and in, in retrospect, I, I, I got to thinking a little bit about where we've seen Jim's impact and it's hard to narrow that down to one specific thing, obviously, but the idea of naming a con, the conference, the big conference room right off the lobby, the Jim Ferryman Conference Room, that sort of struck me as an appropriate thing to do. We need to name something, ob- obviously something after Jim. And I'm just looking for input from the rest of the board recommendation, you know, do we do the conference room or do we do a pump station? Just, just looking for input, I guess.
Mister President? I'd like to follow up on Vice, Vice Chair Schaefer's comment. Just to me, I think it would be credibly appropriate for the conference room since he was on this a great deal of time and did a tremendous amount of work for, obviously overall the sanitary district and, and as a whole, but you know, I think it would be more appropriate being at, at our, our boardroom that, that we convene in, hopefully one of these days soon. And that members, the public will obviously always, you know, be able to come to and things like that. Not everyone's gonna drive by Eldon. It's right down the street from my house. I'll, I'll see it all the time, which is cool, but I think the conference room, being that he was a director and president for a good number of years would probably be most appropriate, but that, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I, I like that idea. Any other directors' inputs?
You know, I have one. You know, I don't think we have a plaque over our building that we have, that we're in now. And, you know, we do at the Wilson site.
There's a plaque there.
As you're walking the door on the right.
Yes.
And our names are all on there, so Jim is on there. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I never even noticed it.
Scott, you realize which, the conference room I'm talking about, right?
The boardroom, the boardroom, right? The large conference with the large.
The large conference room.
Where, where we have board meetings.
No.
No. Where we have.
Where the large conference table is.
Where we, where we used to, where the big conference table is. You know, that's what people see when they first walk in the building. They see that room.
Are you talking about his name in the conference room or on the exterior?
The, the James Ferryman Conference Room or Meeting Room or whatever.
I think Director Eccles was talking about the boardroom.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm fine either or, I just think the, the, the headquarters is appropriate, so.
I like the idea of Mike, what he said. When you walk in, that's what you see right away.
You're gonna see it right on the door and he's, you know. So many people turn left and they don't even see the boardroom. And I mean, from a public standpoint, we're still wanting to meet at the boardroom. I, I just think that would be more visible for everybody.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Why, I do, I do also, and I, I think Director Eccles is just, you know, is, is, is intending to have a room in the building. And if you think that's visible, how about if we appoint Mike to work with staff? You know, to, to do, do that, the conference room naming, you know, as he's discussed.
I'll be glad to help staff, but I think they got it, Scott. I think you got it. So that, I, I will, I will move that we name the large conference room after Jim Ferryman, former, former board member and board president.
And I'd like to second that.
Move the pump station?
So, so what I would, so I would just revise the resolution and, and switch out Eldon Lift Station to the conference room?
All in favor, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Go on to item number five, which is receive and file the wastewater force main air release valve.
Mister President, if I, I'm sorry, if I can go back to item number four, just the, the CAC also recommended the board name a special event after Jim Fairman, so if we can get direction from the board, what events you want to name after him? Like if we have the upcoming cardboard, cardboard recycling event, the community shredding event, the composting event, or we can, we can rename one of our SEPA events after Jim Fairman, if you like.
I would like to see it tied more to wastewater than solid waste. Jim had a bigger impact, to me, he had a bigger impact on the wastewater side of things, being involved with those C S D and everything. So is there an event that we could tie that to?
Well, we do, I, I, once a year, again, regarding our SEPA, we do focus on wastewater. I believe in the, either the fall or spring, but one time a year, we have one, we have SEPA twice a year, one events for solid waste for wastewater, so we can dedicate the wastewater side to Jim Fairman.
I, I'll include that as part of my motion.
All in favor say aye?
Accepted a second too.
Okay, all in favor say aye? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. The next item is item number five, which is receive and file the wastewater force main air release valve correction actions report. Then do any of the directors have any questions or recommendations for, for this report? Okay, you know, I had a couple of questions. I was just gonna ask if this was the item Sue Lester is, I wanted to speak on, but I think it's item number four. I've got written on this report. Yeah, my goal for this is, and I think the district's goal and all directors' goal is, is to have every air release valve when it's malfunctioning and spewing out raw sewage be directed back to a, a, a safe place and then have some way for staff to know that that has occurred. And, and I think that, I think that's where the, the direction of where this is going. Scott, do you have any input?
Yes, Mister President, thank you. Yes, that, that is the intent. Right now, we are still evaluating all the air release files. As you can see in the staff report, we, we are taking some corrective measures on, on some of them already, like the Mesa Bridge, the air release valve in the Mesa Bridge, which we had two, two sewer spills in the last five years at that location. We're planning on removing that air release valve. We're just waiting to get the permits from Caltrans. And then the other two S S Os we had in the last five years was at the intersection of, of Mesa Drive and Riverside Drive. And that one is that we, we recently installed a new air release valve at that location. And then we also installed a vent that was installed to, that will direct sewer a, a, to a nearby manhole if that air release valve malfunctioned, so it won't go into storm drain, it will go into, to the sewer system. I know Mark is, is working with R B H on some improvements on the other air release valves and we're hoping to have the final correction action report to you by next month.
Yeah, my, Director Eccles, do you have your hand up or? No, you did, well, you do, but it's not for a question.
Sorry, Mister President, I was scratching itches. Zoom always gets me.
Well, yeah, Scott, Scott, I, I would ask Mark and the engineers just to make sure that there, somehow it's knowledgeable that those air release valves are leaking. It, 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 it's absolutely necessary that, that if they leak, they go somewhere appropriate, but you know, I don't know how often staff, I think that should be in, in the staff's rounds and/or electronically know that, you know, that, that leak has occurred. Anyway.
Good point, yes.
Probably where you're headed.
Yes, thank you.
Do, do, do any of the other directors have any comments or discussion on this item number five? If not, we'll deem it received and filed. And then go on to the engineers' reports, which is also a receiving file. Do any of the directors have any questions on the capital improvements project status report? I, I would only like to say I see Mark's name on it. You know, I'm looking forward to the, to the evolution of that report.
Thanks, President Newton. I, and board members, this is my first cut at revising the report. The old report that you've typically received has been added as an attachment to it. But what I wanted to do is produce a report that basically talked about the activities we did during the last month or a four-week period, because it starts in the middle of one month and goes to the middle of another month. I'm open to suggestions and recommendations, since this is my first report. I'm not sure how close to the bullseye I hit. So if, if, if President Newton, if you and the rest of the board members can provide me or Scott comments, that would be appreciated. And I'm also happy to discuss any items or go over any items in more detail for you.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the engineers' report?
Yeah, Bob, this, Mike, I, I would like to just get some clarification on project three eighteen, the president's pump station. If that's okay.
What is your question, Mike?
Well, in, in Mark's report, and actually I'll, I guess I'll direct it to Mark. They would talked about the district receiving calls regarding park access closure. And it, it's really about the third call. It said that someone from the city called inquiring about improvements and project schedule. I, I guess, did, did we portray to the city that we were improving? I don't think we ever did that, did we? We never said we were improving the access, but that we were gonna, I think repay and do some other things, so there really wasn't. Did, does the city have the impression that we're improving access to that area or have we cleared that up?
Director Schaefer, I believe, I was very clear with the chief of staff and I haven't heard a follow-up phone call from him or nor have I received a, a phone call from the, the council person. So I believe we were clear. I think we, we, and in fact, before I even came on board, the district's actually sent to property owners, to the city and to others notification, not just one, but many notifications. I've seen at least two. I think there's either actually three or four that went out to various to the community and others notifying them that we were closing it. We, the city has reviewed the drawings before I came on board. And when I was talking with the City Public Works Director, he acknowledged that he had, to me, he had, he had reviewed the drawing. So I'm not sure, other than maybe council members are hopeful that we are improving the access to the park. I think that's really the bottom line, but I'm, it's conjecture on my part, I will admit. That's, I would like to keep that off the record, but I think that's what's, what might be happening, maybe.
I think read my mind because it was conjecture on my part that I'm sure a council member, whoever the council member was that called, assumed or was hopeful that we would be putting up some edifice or something to get people into Canyon Park. And, and I just want to make sure that what we had there before was, was more than adequate. I mean, it was a safe transgression into the park and egress, egress from the park. And as long as we leave it that way, I'm, I know I'm gonna be happy. So I, I agree with your assessment of it. I think we'll just leave it at that.
Well, yeah, and, and we had a, we, this was a discussion at the liaison committee meeting and the, the council, the, the city council members that were there thanked us, uh, Director Public Works or Raj uh, was there and, and they said they would, um, help us communicate that it's going to be closed for the certain part of the duration of the contract and then access would, would be, uh, available as soon as the contract was done. Right. Again, to access to the park. There should, I, I'm not, I haven't been to the site, but isn't there a sign or we should have a sign there that talks about the duration of the contract? And, you know, our name on it and, and a way for the public to communicate, but there will be access when it's done.
Yeah, yes, President Newton, there is, there are, I think there are actually a couple of signs like you described. And, and in addition, I think it was end of February, uh, Gina Tarazo, uh, of the district basically sent out another mailer to the local, um, community advising them that our project was late to start and will be late to finish. So there was even a last minute uh, mail out on, on behalf of the, the district to talk about that project and how it's been slightly delayed.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I don't know how extensive that mail out was, but I, I'm sure a lot of people come from quite a long distance away. They may not have been included in that, so the, the local information needs to be there, but the city had it. Uh, hopefully they did a, um, you know, and talked, talked about it. It is a project and, and it will be equally good, if not better, access when the thing is done.
Bob, one last comment?
Yes, Mike. Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
Uh, Market asked for some input on, on the report, and I was very satisfied with the report and the format and, um, I'm not sure how big your target or your bullseye was, Mark, but I think you got pretty close to it.
Okay, can we go on to, uh, uh, are there any treasurer's reports?
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Uh, and then, uh, Alan, how about the, uh, attorney's reports, oral report of the executive compensation?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the oral report pursuant to the legislation enacted after the Bell uh, compensation scandal happened. As you know, an oral report must pursue any approval of, uh, executive compensation. And it must occur at a regular meeting on the regular agenda and not on a consent calendar. Delonny, could you put up, um, the first page of the contract on the next item? The, the contract itself.
Yes, give me one second, it's pulling up.
Thank you. I think the, uh, the CPI, as you know, the manager did not, uh, take a, uh, compensation adjustment last year, but he declined it. And, uh, this year, uh, we're, we're doing a two-year. And it was, we believe it was, uh, close to the two years combined was close to four percent. Uh, that what the board has determined and Scott has agreed to is a three percent for, uh, last year and a one percent for this year. I'm sorry. Uh, three point five percent total, so three point five percent last year and one percent this year. It takes him from one ninety-one thousand three hundred eighty to the sum of one ninety-eight zero seven eight and seventeen cents. And that is my oral report before you consider the contract.
Do any of the directors have any questions or input on that discussion?
Um, just, so this is a CPI increase, not a cola, cola adjustment?
Well, it's a CPI and cola is the same thing in my, in my view. Is there, is there another, am I missing anything?
I, I don't think so, Alan. I, I've just, I've heard it. I've heard two different things from other sources, um, but I agree with you. I think CPI and cola mean the same to me.
Okay. Any other directors' input? Um, do, let's see. Okay, that's an oral report, then, then we'll go on to item number two.
That's correct, Mr. President.
Okay, Alan, you're up.
Uh, the contract is presented for you. That is the only change that has been made. And the recitals reflect the, uh, the history, the recent history of salary compensation, and, uh, it is submitted for your approval. It is, uh, was prepared, uh, to, uh, memorialize what the board, uh, the board's authority given to the president and then what the president and the general manager were able to work out.
Do, uh, do I have a motion on this or any other discussion?
I, I'll move the acceptance of the fourth amendment to the twenty seventeen employment agreement, uh, with the general manager, Scott Carroll.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any, any opposed? Um, we'll go down to local meetings then.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah, you.
Thanks for finding, realizing how important you are to us.
Um, let's see, local meetings. I'll start off with, uh, Orange County Sand District. Um, basically, I want to report on the, um, uh, strategic planning work that, that I've been involved in. Um, one of the items was, uh, uh, something that's near and dear and, and, and we, we take, uh, great in, interest in this, and that is, um, uh, the, the rainfall events. Um, I think in two thousand and two, the Orange County Sand District did what's called a cooperative, um, project program and gave money to the twenty-five member agencies, uh, to help improve their infrastructure to reduce, uh, Orange County Sand District's peak flow. That peak flow has done some damage over the years. Uh, when I was there, uh, there was a rainfall event that nearly doubled the flow into the plant and it damaged the outfall, a twenty-five ton outfall gate. And, um, um, we, we, we quickly repaired that. Um, they, they also, um, well, the, so, so what, but my suggestion to the strategic planning group was, was they, they take a look at the six thousand miles, um, uh, that the twenty-five member agencies have, were a member agency, one of the twenty-five, and, and consider, um, um, programs that also, since our infrastructure is, is continuing to age, just like the Orange County Sand District's infrastructure is continuing to age, uh, consider potentially helping the member agencies, uh, again, um, mitigate, uh, uh, mitigate those storm events by, um, working with their infrastructure. That was probably the most significant thing that, that happened at Orange County Sand District. Uh, they said they would take it under advisement. Uh, we'll know, uh, we have one-third of the strategic plan still to go over next month and then staff will come back, um, and, um, with any revisions, uh, and the board will approve it and it'll, it'll probably be memorialized about next September. So that, that's my input on Orange County Sand District. Uh, Director Perry, did you go to SARFA?
I believe he is.
Oh, Director Perry's gone, okay. Um, Secretary Schaefer, um, you, you wanted to do the report on ISDAQ?
Sure. Um, to start out with, ISDAQ has two openings and, uh, for, uh, board members. And one was, uh, the second. And one was the third on the board. And, uh, Brooke Jones, oh geez, can you believe my phone is off? Wait a minute, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Anyway, Brooke Jones was the one who, uh, actually was involved with, uh, wanting to be the third vice president. And then Bob Vicker came in just after this. And so we had already gone out with Brooke Jones as far as, uh, being a, a chair, being involved with the, uh, third vice president. So we did a, uh, election for him and then for Bob Vicker, we're doing the election at this next meeting, which he'll, you know, we want to give everyone an opportunity if they want to apply for this job other than just Bob. And, uh, Brooks is from, uh, Yorba Linda and he's, right away, he's got into the legislation end of it and he's doing a great job. So we're really happy with him on that. And, uh, if no one else, uh, puts in for an application, then we'll be, uh, voting on Bob Vicker for sure. But we'll see what happens. And, uh, that was all on, uh, the, um, that district. And then on top of that, uh, I went to the finance committee, or I should say I had a Zoom on the finance committee that I sit on from, um, CSDA. And then also, uh, the study session that I was involved with, uh, for us, for Costa Mesa Sand District. And then that was on, uh, February ninth. And February nineteenth was, um, this was something special. This was a vis- visual summit that I went to. And it was on Zoom, but it was outstanding. It was the CSDA actually put it together. And the sponsors were Edison and the sponsors was USC. And they did a tremendous job. It was called, uh, CSDA's Emergency Preparing the Summit. And, uh, it took four day, uh, actually four different hours on, uh, the nineteenth, and then we came back again on the twenty-sixth and did four more hours. And it was just on everything that you should know about preparing for, uh, emergency or any kind of preparingness that you need to have plans for. And it really was outstanding. They are going to turn around and put it out for, um, into their CSDA library in a, in a few weeks. And so if you get a chance, you should definitely try to see it. It's, it's so worthwhile. Then also, who, um, we had two people from Orange County that were speakers. Kind of a fun thing to be able to say, hey, somebody from Orange County decides, because this is all based in LA. And, uh, the first one was, um, actually it was Stacy Taylor. And she's the internal affairs manager for Mesa Water District. She's someone that's known. Yeah. And then, uh, the topics that they talked, she talked. It was all panels. And she talked on developing an emergency communication plan. The importance of import, in incorporating digital commer- communication into an emergency plan. And she did a real good job on that. And then the other person who was involved in it was, um, Vicky Osborne. And she did a real good job too. And, uh, she's the director of emergency management and water emergency, uh, responsible organization of Orange County and the municipal, and she comes from the municipal water district. I said that so that Eric, Director Eric, did understand who's doing what. And, um, she did a real good job too on a panel. And the panel that she was involved in is emergency planning, preparation, and, uh, response plan. So that everyone got so much out of her because of the way it was handled and the speakers that were really outstanding. And aside from that, uh, that was about it. I'm sorry, I, my sinuses are killing me and that's, I'm having trouble with it. I'm here. So that's, anyway, that's my report.
Mike, do you have a report on SDRMA? You're muted, Mike.
No, uh, no, I'm not. Um, we have a board meeting, um, actually Wednesday morning. And of interest to, uh, Scott and Caitlin and Diana, we will be talking about rates. Um, I think, I think SDRMA has set preliminary rates to you or that those will be forthcoming. I'm not sure we'll get a solid rate on Wednesday because of the, the excess and reinsurance situation, but, uh, I'll push for one as quickly as we can so that you can get it into the, into the budget. And that's really it. I'll have a, a better report next month, Bob.
Uh, any other directors that need to make reports for reimbursement?
Yeah, Bob, if I could, I, you know, normally Art does this, but I'll go ahead and give a report on Waco. Um, I, I, I think several of us attended the Waco, Waco meeting on the, what was it, the fifth of March? And without being too blunt, that was probably the worst Waco meeting I've ever attended. Um, it, I, I, I'm not a hunter, so killing ducks doesn't make a big deal to me. But the meeting was really based on Ducks Unlimited. I think that's the name of the organization.
Yeah.
And what, what they're doing to improve watershed in the Central Valley so that they can kill more ducks. That was the gist of the meeting. And so, um, I, I would hope that Waco would, you know, we're, we're, we're in the waters, the wastewater system, so we're, we're part of the water community. And I, I'd really like to see Waco take a, a closer look at the meetings they're, they're doing. So, um, not a very good meeting as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I think there was, you know, there, there were some infrastructure improvements that, that I was interested in, but you're right. It, it did, it did seem a little far-fetched. Um, any other, any other meetings that directors need to report on? I'll be writing up my, uh, my, my, my attendance at, uh, some, some of the, um, Orange County Sand District things, and it'll be included in my, um, um, meeting reimbursement request, but although I don't request reimbursement for those meetings because they pay me separately. Um, if not, um, I think Scott, you've got some direction, uh, during the meeting. And if, if no other, uh, does, does any director have any oral communications and director comments?
I have.
Go ahead, Early, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, the seat A is up for CSDA. And I told you last time about, um, that, uh, actually there was only one candidate at the time. So now there's two. So Joe McKenzie was the one that was going for it. And she also sent us a resolution if we wanted to make it for her. And the one that's going for it too is Fallbrook Regional Health District. And this is a lady, Rachel Mason. And she's the chief executive officer of that. And it's down in Fallbrook. So, um, you know these two. The deadline is the twenty-ninth of March. So I'm wondering if, um, we could put this on an agenda so that we can turn around and vote on this too pretty soon. I've been, uh, backing Joe, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take care of getting it on the agenda and staff will. Um, nominations close the end of this month and there, there are two candidates and when it, when it's timely, we'll, 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 uh, take a look at it and choose whether we support one candidate or the other.
Good. Okay, yeah. I just wanted to say that, you know, Joe has, um, a real good background of CSDA. And she's been involved with us in this southern portion. And of course, being I've been involved with her and, uh, the other person involved. Being I've been involved with her and uh the other person involved. I, you know, I just wanted to say that she's, I comes highly recommended, okay, that's it.
Mike?
Yeah, um Scott, just a follow-up and in the thank you guys for especially uh. Ed for taking a look at that situation on Labrador with the with the port-a-potty that's. Decorated and in the front of that guy's yard, I I understand we're having some issues getting that resolved or there's some city issues or something. And I just want to thank you guys for taking a look at it and, you know, my biggest fear is that. Something were to happen to that port-a-potty and that spill get in our system, we're gonna get blamed for it. And and I don't know how active they are with that port-a-potty at that location, but just a thank you to to. All of you and to Ed in particular for for sticking their neck out and doing what we need to do, so. Uh that was it, Bob, just to thank you to staff for being proactive on that.
Thank you.
And any other, any other directors, uh communication?
One more comment and that is, you know, last year we did this annual uh, I don't know what you call where. People, it was an open house for us, for our uh district and. We had the uh park, our our actually, the parking lot was all full, we had a vector. Control truck there and we had all different items on display and. People really liked that and I was wondering if we're thinking of doing that this next year or this year, I should say.
Scott, do you have any plans?
Just with the SEPA, uh but again, we're 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 waiting to see what the new CBC guidelines and the accounting guidelines are gonna be. Uh as as more people get vaccinated, so hopefully we could be able to do something in the year, into the calendar year.
Yeah, I thought that was great, public relation wise.
End of the calendar year, you mean a fiscal year?
No, end of the calendar year, because fiscal year ends in June, I I don't believe.
Yeah, okay.
We know it's changed and and um CDC guidelines by then, but by maybe the fall there will be.
Okay, yeah. Uh any other jury, pardon me, Arlene, any other communications and director comments?
Mr. President?
Director Heckle.
Yeah, thank you, uh I just wanted to thank all the people who took time to apply for the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
As someone myself who who've applied and served on these various types of committees, uh. It it's it's a great act of volunteerism and I want to thank them all for taking time out and supplying their applications and um. I was pleasantly surprised with the turnout, um and so I I I want to thank them all. Going forward, um I would like to see this board look at that sort of process. As other government bodies such as ours have, you know, a little bit more of a plan in place that we could encourage more people from. Other parts of our city to apply if they feel that there's gonna be a organized discussion and and uh chances to get on these. To serve on these committees, so I would ask that. We look at uh not only the term limits, but also just, you know, the application process and our board review of it. Alan brought forth and uh a decent suggestion, there there's other ways to do it, so. Um I'd be curious at a future meeting to look at some of those ideas. And then secondly, uh term limits um with regards to the the committees and. Quite frankly, ourselves as well, um as I ran for this position, that was something I discussed with a lot of members of the community and. Um it was brought up in our uh in public comments here today. I too would like to see that uh discussed and and reported back to us at a a future meeting where appropriate. I think it's uh it's good to have that discussion uh for our board and our our processes going forward. And whatever comes of that will come of it, but I just, for myself, I would like to see that uh. Reported back and and discussed with our board, um so that's all I have.
Yeah, I I would, I like I like the suggestions, I think probably the fall, maybe October um. We won't be reappointing, well, we won't be appointing uh CAC members. I don't think we do it every year, I think it's every two years.
Every two, yeah.
Um but, you know, we should do that in the fall, both the term limits for the board and and the um. Application process and the and the and the potential revision of the term limits for the volunteers on the CAC.
I appreciate that, Mr. President.
I would really like to see applicants from each district, um you know, the city has moved towards. Their their committees and commissions, um you know, each director has a has an opportunity to make an appointment. Rather than, you know, by at large and um I think those are good suggestions.
Great, thank you very much.
Any other, any any other comments or communications? Uh I thank you very much, I think it's been a very productive meeting um. Um I have to get off, my battery's running low, no. My metal battery's running low and my computer battery's running low.
It's dinner time.
Yeah, yeah, and and also that.
I didn't think they made batteries back in your day.
Why, uh we certainly didn't have them in the outhouse and and we didn't need them for the for the TV when it was invented. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.